It's 3:30 p.m. I'd like to call for tonight's regular Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, here at the Merrill High School Auditorium. If we could start with the roll call, please, Tammy.
Brett Waller.
Here.
Lyndon Yingling.
Here.
Tom Pro.
Here.
Chad Krieger.
Here.
Ron Liberty.
Here.
Kendra Asness. Jacqueline Bremler.
Here.
Maria Bolfi.
Here.
Kevin Blake.
Here. Please join me in stand, face the flag for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic of America, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education meeting. MAPS respects the role our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to working collaboratively to provide our students with a safe learning environment and the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all in attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. On our agenda next is public comments. Just as a general reminder, the Board allows, schedules up to fifteen minutes of the beginning of each regular meeting for members of the public to speak. Speakers will be allocated approximately three minutes to address the Board. If you have a large group, please designate one representative to speak. Board members may ask clarifying questions during the comment section. We usually postpone further discussion and/or action until further public input. We have been advised that the Wisconsin Supreme Court has specifically ruled that there is no absolute privilege which protects defamatory comments by speakers at board meetings such as this, therefore, please be aware that each speaker bears the personal risk. If anything he or she says during public comment period of the school board meeting is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. Thank you. First, I would like to call up to the podium and the microphone Marcy Cordova. If we do have anyone else with the pink sheets, please follow those forward as Marcy is speaking.
Hello, I'm Marcy Cordova. I'm the Library Technology Specialist at Merrill High School. I want to start by saying I'm here to talk about the budget, possible budget cuts. I recognize this is a very difficult position for you, that a lot of cuts need to be made. From my understanding, cuts were made on a school-by-school basis. They really looked at each individual school. I think the library program is different, though, because cuts in one school are going to have effects in other schools. If the elementary library technology specialists are cut, much of their work will need to be picked up by the secondary librarians. Even if we cut their technology classes, which I believe are currently twenty-one sections at Kate and thirteen sections at Washington, we will still need to do all of the other stuff that they're already doing, like ordering books, databases, other library items, promote reading, work with the library, on what they should teach. The library at Kate is retiring, so we'll have to go through and train that new person. We co-teach lessons on technology and research, work with teachers on ideas for integrated technology and information literacy, provide professional development, troubleshoot tech issues, deploy devices to new students. When devices break, we're the ones who start the whole process and set up new ones. We assist teachers with app requests, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We have a lot of responsibilities. And we're talking about switching to Chromebooks next year, which will need a lot more training for our staff and students. If the secondary LTSs are providing those services for the elementary schools, we're going to have a large impact on the amount of time that we have at our own schools. So it's something that's affecting all of the schools, not just the elementaries. And also, at this point, we're looking at cutting the library support staff at the middle school and high school. So not only will we be filling in at the elementaries, we'll have less support in the high school. I believe on the sheet that Shannon had, it said that, you know, the only thing that really talked about the library was book orderings, but there's a lot more that goes to running the library than just ordering books. There's checking in, checking out, all of that stuff. And that's what our aides tend to do, a lot of that support stuff. I like to say the first month of school, I don't even touch library stuff. It's all technology and supporting the teachers, so. If those positions are also cut, you know, it's really going to put us in a bind. So basically, out of the eight people that are currently working in libraries, we're looking at cutting four of them. So that is going to cause a massive change in the way we offer library program. I'd like to mention that studies have shown the best way to increase literacy scores, especially with low-income students, is having a strong library program. They have shown that over and over again in studies. Currently this year, just as an example, we've checked out twenty-three thousand physical items between all of our schools. So that is a non-fila lot of books that kids are getting in their hands and reading. If we have to have libraries shut down for portions of the time, that's obviously going to hurt us. So I would like you to consider maybe not cutting all of this. Maybe looking at some different options for cutting to try to get hurt the kids less. The library is a safe space for kids. You know, this is where they feel comfortable. We have kids who come and eat lunch with us every day. You know, it's a good place for kids. We'd like to keep them open as much as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Marcy. Any board members have clarifying questions before we excuse Marcy?
I just have a question. What was the amount of books that we've ever checked in and out again?
Twenty-three thousand physical books, and actually sixteen thousand ebooks and audiobooks as well, so for a total of thirty-nine thousand checked out so far this year.
All right, thank you.
Any additional clarifying questions from board members? All right. Thank you, Marcy. Tammy, did you have any other slips turned in this, this time? All right, I did not either. I don't see anyone's hands up to speak. We're going to move to recognition at this time. The Board tonight would like to recognize the varsity dance team for making it to the state competition on February fourth of this year. Please help us congratulate the following. Head coach, Cassie Lazzard; assistant coach, Sidney Roberts; team members, seniors, Connor Sales and Alex Schultz, juniors, or junior, Reggie Lottie; sophomore Molly White; and freshman Liberty Fuchs; Addison Clark; Madison Prentice; and Miley Sykes. Thank you for all you do, and you guys make us proud. While Sidney passes out your recognition certificate, I'm going to say it's a plural briefly to Connor, because I warned him that I'm going to ask a senior to speak and tell a little bit about the dance team in the state competition, if you would.
All right, so we went to regionals, what day was it? I don't remember.
Last weekend, November.
So last weekend, November, January. We went to regionals, which was at D.C. Everest, and we placed second out of eight teams. So that qualified us for the state competition in McCross, which was like a week and a half ago. And at state, we placed eighth out of nine, which we weren't looking, that's not how we were hoping it would go out, turn out.
You're okay.
What was your favorite part of that? I mean, that journey in itself had to be very rewarding, but you wouldn't have anything to add for Connor's name?
I think that the best part about this year in general was compared, because, I mean, Alex and Connor are seniors, but I've been on the team, I'm a junior, I've been on the team the same amount of years as them, as compared to the other two years previous, I think that this is the best year as a team that we've had. I think it's the best community that we've built so far, and I think that compared to other years, we had the best time. And I think that that's what counts more than the final place, even. And it was a joy to go there. I mean, it was great. We got, we made friends with other teams, we got to watch some great, amazing dances. It was an amazing experience. And I, we've been to state now, this will be the third time technically, my freshman year, their sophomore year, we had to turn in virtual videos. But we got to go last year as well, and it's just every year, especially as COVID goes in the past, a little bit more, there's more opportunities to do things when we're there. And it's just so fun to be there.
Excellent, great job. Proud of you for representing MAPS and everything that you guys offered, not only to the district, but to our community. Merrill Dance Team, what a team. Next, I will ask our student board representatives, Isaiah Rell and Brooke Rudai, to come down front and center and tell us what's going on at the high school, please.
All right, so Dinner and Show is coming up this Friday and Saturday. The choir members have been practicing their songs for months, and some singers will even have the opportunity to sing solos and duets as well. A meal will also be served to go along with one sure to be a great performance. And also, tickets for the Spring Musical, Fitter on the Roof, are going on sale this Friday, and the show will be in mid-April. The Merrill Wrestling Team performed very well at regionals in front of their home crowd, with nine members of the team moving on to sectionals in Charlotte. The team was led by Ryder Depes, who finished first place in his regional and pinned all of his opponents. The wrestlers are looking forward to their upcoming challenge and hope to be able to send as many people to state as possible. The girls' basketball team has had a very successful season this year and has improved mightily over their four-and-twenty season from a year ago. They even upset Stevens Point, who was previously unbeaten in conference. The girls have one more regular season game left, and then we'll set their sights on regionals.
Next week, Wednesday, our high school students will be participating in Winterfest. This gives our students a chance to unwind with their peers and teachers. They have over twenty-five different activities available. Not only will students have the chance to participate in fun activities at school, they also have the chance to go off campus for some events. Seeing as March is appro, is, as March is approaching, this means that the ACT test is right around the corner for our juniors. This test will be taken on March seventh, and the class, and they will be taking this test in their advisory, allowing students to be in a more familiar and comfortable environment. Our juniors will be testing while the rest of our students will be having a virtual day at home. Also coming up next week, Friday, we have our great speaker presenting, we have our great speaker presenting, not just for our MHS students, but for our school, for all schools in Merrill. This will improve MAPS schools as well as our private schools, Trinity, St. John, and St. Francis. This is a very exciting event in our community as it is open to the public. This is a fantastic opportunity to hear from a motivational speaker and gain a new perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah and Brooke. Any board members have any clarifying questions or discussions on what's going on as presented at the high school? Thanks again. Appreciate it. Next, we have a board education opportunity. I'm going to turn this over to Superintendent Murray here for a quick introduction.
Thanks, Kevin. We have an after-hear from Dr. Kelly Strickton tonight on a topic that's very timely and germane to our discussion as we go through it. As we, you know, we had a similar presentation early, or near the end of summer, I guess it was, with our committee, and so it's nice to kind of revisit these, this concept of how our school is funded, and how do the revenues, all those kinds of things work. And I don't want to steal her thunder, so I'm just going to turn it over to Kelly.
Good evening. So my goal tonight is to review with you the revenue limit worksheet, and that can, that can be a lot, but in a very short time, kind of just review factors that impact our revenue limit authority. I will give some tidbits. The governor's budget proposal was released today, so I'll give a little bit of tidbits of that and how that may impact our revenue, and understand the assumptions that are put into the forecasts that we're working on of tonight as we make some decisions. I just want to put a shout-out now, and I have it throughout some slides, but any of these slides are right from the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. I took a couple of different presentations they have shortened to depth, this is kind of a quick soundbite of that, but do want to reference that a lot of this content is theirs. So I do this equation a lot, but our revenue limit minus state aid is our property tax levy. You can move this equation around, as I mentioned, many different ways. So our tax levy plus our state aid, state aid, that is sometimes referred to as equalized aid, is equals that revenue limit. So that's kind of the basic equation. A reminder again on the history of revenue limits have been around since ninety-three, ninety-four school year. They are designed to limit the amount of revenue a school district can raise through local property tax and state general school aids annually on a per pupil basis. It does not include state categorical aids, federal aids, local receipts, most debt service levies, and I'll get into that a little bit, what's within, as a reminder of what's outside of the revenue limit. It used to increase annually, but six out of the last eight years, there's been zero increase, and I'll dig into that a little bit more. That has put many school districts into situations where they need to go to referendum or look for other avenues of revenues or discuss reductions and cuts, unfortunately. This is calculated based upon a school district's three-year rolling membership. I want to clarify again that revenue limit is based on membership, which means students living in a district. It does not mean enrollment. So it's the students that live this, in this district, whether they attend our district or another district. That is membership, which impacts revenue limit authority. Student enrollment kind of comes into play a little bit differently, and I'll go into depth on that. And it can only be exceeded, I kind of mentioned before, local referendum. So the only way you can go over that revenue limit authority is through local referendum. So what's within revenue limits? So general fund ten, it's our property tax levy, general state aid, computer aid, and I'll get into that in more detail. We no longer have debt, but we previously have had Fund Thirty-Eight debt. That is non-referendum debt service funds. You can, part of your revenue limit authority, you can dedicate some of that money essentially to Fund Thirty-Eight. We do not have a capital projects fund, Forty-One, but that's within the revenue limits for districts that do. We have Fund Forty-Six, remember, and that's separate, different than Fund Forty-One. So the basic formula, I'll bring that equation up again, our total revenue limit minus general aid is our allowable limited tax levy. This I snapped right from our revenue limit spreadsheet from twenty-two, twenty-three for this school year. So you'll see line eleven, and I'm going to refer to line eleven, that's the overall total, that's our revenue limit authority, if you will. The number right below is the total aid used in computation. And again, that's sometimes referred to as equalized aid. That would be a whole separate education just to cover how that aid is calculated. I'll click on that or touch on that a little bit. You can see that aid is broken down on that computer and personal property. Those figures are, we don't create those as a district, those are given to us. So the combination of the equalized aid, and then you can see thirteen, that's what we levy from tax levy. So I'll refer to this again, but that's the basic formula and how you read it on the revenue limit spreadsheet. I do want to clarify what's outside of the revenue limit. So categorical aids, and I'm going to refer to this in the governor's budget later. Special education aid, I've highlighted that per pupil aid, so there is a per pupil categorical aid that's separate from the per pupil amount within the revenue limit. So I just want to say there's both. There's the one at the per pupil part, part of the revenue limit, and then the aid. Library aid, transportation, Sage, HGR, varsity, state federal grants, student fees, gate fees, donations. Again, if you have reference for debt service, we are debt-free. And then our fund aid tax levy, which for us is most of our middle school activities and our pool athletics. So this directly from DPI, this is kind of, this is a state average, not, this isn't specific to Merrill, but typically for most districts, seventy to ninety percent of your revenue comes from local property tax or state general aids. And by state general aids, I mean that equalization aid from that worksheet, as well as any special adjustment aid, intra-district and intra-district. That is open enrollment aid. Again, we are a district that, and I've shared that with you before, we have many more students that open enroll in than leave. So this past school year, I will tell you, the net difference is six-hundred-and-eighty-one. So we had some students coming out, we had well over, I think it was close to eight-hundred coming in. The difference of that is six-hundred-and-eighty-one, more students coming in than out. That equated to over five million dollars in aid that we received in June. So when you look at that total, that revenue limit authority, realize over five million is coming in for open enrollment purposes. High poverty aid, which we don't qualify for. And then other sources would be those categorical aids, federal aid, non-property, local revenue, things such as that. But that's, so the revenue limit authority, and then in our case, particularly that open enrollment aid, is pretty huge and does, again, with a referendum dropping off, it'll change a little bit, but in Merrill, I can kind of take a look, it's typically about eighty-five percent is coming from Merrill. State general aid, I just, that eighteen million that you saw in that revenue limit, I'm not going to get into the details, but the fundamental purpose of equalization aid formula is to level the playing field. It provides assistance distributing aid to poorer districts, those with lower property value, again, they look at property value, to make up for what they can't get from their property tax base. So it's a way in that equation to distribute, again, whatever pot of money they have for aids to districts accordingly. So there are some districts in the state of Wisconsin that receive no aid. It's a hundred percent based on their, because of property value, a hundred percent based on their property tax base. This, I think it's important to think about that line of eleven that I talked about before. I just went back three years for Merrill. That amount would include our referendum, so two and a half million was added on year one and year two, and then you can see year three. So you can see this is the biggest piece of that pie, if you will, how different it has been. Now granted, year one, two-point-five million was referendum, so you can assume just, you know, just over twenty-six million. Year two, if we take off that referendum, you can see it's over twenty-six and a half million. You can see year three, it dropped down to twenty-five-point-eight million. So things can factor into this, largely your membership aid, you know, things like that as well. But it just goes to show, even with a referendum from year one to year two, how much that can change. So that is correlated a lot based on your membership and enrollment, to a point when it comes to open enrollment, all those factors, but it can change quite a bit in how much revenue, and so as much as we'd like to have a budget that matches our number of students and it is correlated to a point, it can fluctuate quite a bit. So for budgeting purposes, they always say it's very important to compare line eleven with previous year line, and then major decreases from year to year can have serious implications on your budget. So this is, and I'm going to give this in a couple of different visuals and ways for you tonight, but this is looking back at that per pupil adjustment within the revenue limit I'm talking about in this case. So the adjustments that are made within the revenue limit per pupil, this is the history. You can see that drop in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, that's when our state budget, they had a huge deficit. So one strategy, we had a huge reduction, actually. But you can see we're not even close to where we were if you go back to that peak in two thousand and eight. Therefore, we, as schools, have learned how to operate with less revenue limit opportunity, really, without a referendum anyway. So how does two hundred dollars per pupil increase impact revenue limit authority? So again, going back to these adjustments, because we'll talk about things both in the governor's proposal and in the future regarding per pupil adjustment. So this is where I'm going to attempt to take you live here. This shows, this is on the other side of the revenue limit worksheet, you can see the low revenue ceiling amount here, just want to point that out, as well as, and you can see any kind of member change. This is Mount Cora, the area school district. These were calculated by DPI. They did this as an example of, let's say it was ninety-eight-hundred instead of, or we had two-hundred-thousand dollars per pupil less, let's say. This can give the illustration that that would have been sixteen-hundred dollars less in revenue. And by that, they're looking at that line eleven, or sorry, or the line thirteen, which is your tax. You can see two hundred dollars more, Mount Cora would have gotten sixty-seven thousand dollars additional revenue limit authority. You can see the difference side by side, two hundred less, two hundred more. And again, this is just for illustration purposes, to kind of get an understanding. This is an exercise, DPI, but many business managers, such as I'm through, to kind of think about the impact of it. Now I will point out Wisconsin Dells. For them, two hundred dollars less, they would have overlevied by eighty thousand, so they would have had eighty-one thousand dollars less in total revenue. That increase would have given them three-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars additional revenue limit authority. You can see side by side. Notice this hold harmless difference. That hold harmless, and this DPI, like, you shouldn't normally be able to adjust these, this is just to replicate kind of what that looks like. But you can see the impact of things like hold harmless or declining enrollment exemptions, how they impact that. So Germantown, another example, two hundred dollars less would have been no change, and it's because of hold harmless. Two hundred dollars more, they would have had the ability to levy seven-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars more. So I give this as like three examples where pretty significant differences in what that per pupil has an impact on that district. Every district is a little unique in their situation of their membership, whether they're having declining enrollment, whether they're eligible for hold harmless. And I will say, last Friday, a number of business managers and some superintendents were able to meet with three of our legislators and have conversations around this budget and what impacts, and I would tell you, the districts and the school business managers in the room, it impacts them all differently. So what they would hope would happen, or how it impacts their district, at least immediately, varies quite a bit by the district. So that's really what this is supposed to show. I'm going to attempt to show you now, here is our twenty-two, twenty-three. Now, scroll a little too fast. I'm going to do the negative two hundred, just as we did in that examples, and you can see from here, no change. You can see how current, current law, you're not supposed to change these, because it's set, that's why I'm getting that error, just so you know, because, hey, you can't do that. But you can for simulation purposes. If I add two hundred, you can see down here the difference, we would have had the ability to levy about fifteen thousand dollars more in revenue. So for us, that two-hundred-dollar difference meant fifteen thousand dollars in revenue. Granted, every district, their total budget, total revenue limit authority is different, but I'm just trying to bring to your attention that with this budget, how those implications can really be varying from district to district.
Kelly, as you're doing that, can I just ask, or maybe for clarification? So in our case, the revenue limit increase, like the two hundred dollars, doesn't support us, it certainly doesn't show up on the bottom line of our balance sheet very much, or as much as other places, because we are actually paying back that hold harmless first, correct?
Yeah, okay. That's a good way to put it. So the other thing, I could do some other things, and there are a great example, maybe I'll go into forecasting, I can show you that a little bit later if you want to go there. So we use forecast bias. When I talk about forecasting, and I just want to clarify this, so I've done a forecast for you, and we've talked about that for a couple of months. I am putting in a number of assumptions when it comes to how much revenue we might get, that declining enrollment, our membership, how much it may go up and down. This tool, I just want to make that known, that it's a forecasting tool, I'm not doing a line-by-line budget yet. We purchase forecasting tools, especially for districts this size, because you can very quickly calculate different scenarios. If health insurance goes up ten percent, what does that mean? Health insurance goes down one percent, what does that mean? We apply this much of a raise on school district. We apply this much of a raise on school districts, you know, any of those number of different things. I can forecast and see what does that mean. So I've plugged in forecasts on the governor's budget for a couple of those scenarios to see based on my best projection with enrollment. So I just want to make sure that forecasting, that's what we're doing at this point, and I can forecast, and it's an estimate to a point. This tool also, and basically we're taking everything from Skyward, and you've seen Skyward reports, I can look back four years, what are the trends, and then cast forward based on information that I have, so we do that with enrollment. This isn't a crystal ball though, and I wish it was, especially when we talk about enrollment, because it's, I can just punch a button and say cast forward, everyone from five K will go to first grade, everyone first grade to second grade. But as we know with our enrollment, that doesn't always happen. So we can, there's several different ways, and you can take a look at enrollment in terms of, historically though, we're losing students every year, we're not casting forward the exact same numbers. I can tell you exactly how many four K students that we have enrolled within the school district and our community sites right now. What I don't know is how many of them are going to come to Merrill, how many might open and enroll, and that could be for any grades, how many are going to school choice, how many will take advantage of vouchers, how many are going to move and come back three times. You have a topic summary sheet from Karen who oversees that enrollment piece, and it's a moving picture all the time. So even when we project for you, what would be average class size, that can change a lot throughout the year as well. So I just want to make sure that you understand when I'm forecasting, we're not doing line-by-line budgeting yet, I'm starting that process, we're starting to prepare for that. But we are forecasting and tend to appoint these revenues or different scenarios. I'm bringing this up, this is from DPI workshop, they notice now, and because it's unknown, right, state by annual budget, the second year of a state by annual budget, things are already kind of set for you. So like last year, you were on the second year, there's fewer unknowns at least, but there's a lot of like our per membership change, low revenue ceiling. Notice, their advice to us, model various membership scenarios, do best case, worst case, no change. So among other things, that's what I do. Last week, for example, I was with Forecast Five frontline, they brought in a group of business managers, we got together, we worked on our forecast, and we have conversation with each other, what are you putting in for per pupil, what does that mean? So that's what I'm doing right now, and so know that when we give that deficit, it's based on forecasting. Right now, as I think we should be, we have to be a little bit conservative, but I think the more and more information we get, the more understanding we'll have on what's going to be a little bit closer to actual. That membership piece and then enrollment piece, we don't know until the third Friday in September, which that's tough, because we've already passed a budget, and many, you know, we are, we're in a budget spending, and you don't even know your membership yet or don't have that revenue limit authority, known until October. So I'd like to give some highlights, if you can, to kind of, to explain this a little bit. The governor's budget proposal for education, these are a few highlights, I encourage you that there's a lot more to this. A few things I want to point out, that there's more than, first of all, it's a two point six billion dollar investment into education total package, which is historic in nature. It is a billion dollars over the biennium through state's general equalization aid formula, which is the largest proposed direct investment in state general aid since ninety-five, ninety-seven. So it's a favorable proposal for education, and I say that as a public educator in all schools. And even for things, and I want to make it known when I get into this, when I talk about per pupil, I still think it doesn't have, may not have an immediate impact on us, for example, this year, two hundred dollars more would have given us fifteen thousand dollars, but it's good in the long run for schools and for schools in general to continue to build that, even if we don't get an immediate effect this year. But I do want to point out that there's, DPI requested special ed aid. Right now, our reimbursement rate is just below thirty percent. DPI asked for a forty-five percent first year, sixty percent second year, the governor's proposal is sixty percent in both years. I ran a forecast, I can tell you, on the difference of thirty percent to forty-five percent on DPI's proposal last week, and that would get us close to nine hundred thousand dollars. So when we talk about our deficit, there's nine hundred thousand dollars less than we would have. So that's a pretty big opportunity for us, really. That per pupil revenue limit increase, the proposal is three hundred and fifty dollars in the first year and six hundred and fifty dollars in the second year, much like this past year when I just simulated two hundred dollars. I'm going to tell you that there's something to be said about that first one hundred, two hundred, but beyond that, I just did a difference of two hundred and three thousand, it was about four thousand dollars based on my membership. So we may not get immediate, but again, I think long run, that is good for us in education in terms of what that means for us. You'll notice a low revenue ceiling increase of four hundred and fifty dollars per pupil in the first year, seven hundred and fifty dollars per pupil in the second year. This would be added on to that ten thousand dollar number I pointed out before. Unfortunately, that will, even if that passes, until we pass an operational referendum, we will not be able to receive that. That is written into legislation that after two failed referendums within a year, we would not get that. So again, I would say not to advocate that it shouldn't happen, it would be hopefully that we will have an opportunity to have that again, but right now, there would not be an immediate effect. That per pupil aid investment, remember the pick box I put around, there is a per pupil just categorical aid, it currently is at seven hundred and forty-two dollars, both DPI and the governor are proposing a twenty-four dollar increase, so that'd be seven sixty-six next year with forty-five dollar increase the following year. That alone would give us about eighty-six thousand dollars in additional revenue. So this is a favorable budget, and keep that in mind, we have some tough decisions to make tonight. I gave you a rather conservative forecast, which I think we need to at this time, but I wanted to give you a highlight of what some of these things could do in regard to additional revenue for us and helping us make these decisions and overall building a budget for twenty-three, twenty-four. I do want to point this out to you as a tool, and I'm happy to send this presentation to you. You can see that per pupil adjustment that I talked about, and I gave you the graph, you can see that on that per pupil adjustment there. You can also see that low revenue ceiling threshold amounts and how that is year after year as well. So when you take a look at that revenue limit spreadsheet through the years, I pulled out twelve, thirteen this year, I can see that fifty dollars went up, and then you can see the nine thousand at that time, I believe it's nine thousand, yep, was the low revenue ceiling. So this just gives another visual for you from that graph in terms of changes with the revenue. I know that that was a lot, and I could go on, but hopefully that gave you a little bit of insight into governor's budget, and again, just kind of a oversight of that revenue limit authority and what that means for us and how that's impacting our projections that we're talking about tonight. Again, I will share this with you as a PDF, there are some links, for example, the governor, I have the full budget, you can link into that and see that, I can't read some of it. Definitely some things that you can look at. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Strick. Next on our agenda is our administrative reports. As per normal, if any board members had questions or clarifying questions on these reports, they could contact the administration directly prior to this, or they can ask questions as we go along. So at this time, I'll turn the agenda over to Superintendent Murray.
Thanks, Kelly. First on the agenda, item A is the achievement gap reduction objective summary sheet from Glenda Jaginski, who is here this evening, if anybody has any questions for Glenda, she's Seeing none, next on the agenda is the Director of Curriculum and Instruction Report, Data Monitoring Report, also prepared by Glenda, topic summary sheet is attached, if anybody has any questions or clarifications for Glenda. Brings us to the Pine River School for Young Learners Monthly Data Report, prepared by Ryan Martinovich, he is here this evening, and he's available to answer any questions or provide any clarification, should that be needed. Item D on the agenda is the Food Service Participation Report and Update, prepared by Laura Kraus Zastro. I don't believe she is here, but I could forward questions on her if anybody has any. Item E is the Second Friday in January Enrollment Report, that is prepared by Karen Baker, Karen is here this evening, and could answer any questions should you have. Next is the Director of Business Services Report, the twenty-two-three, twenty-four Budget Update, Year End Tasks, et cetera, et cetera, from Dr. Kelly Strick, who is obviously here, and she could answer any questions if you have any. Item G is the Director of Buildings and Grounds Transportation Update, with some building consolidation updates and other things on there. Dale Bergman is, is Dale here this evening? Otherwise, I could forward questions on if there are. And then last is the Superintendent's Report, there's a link provided there, because of the length of our agenda today, I'm just going to touch on one thing, and that is the notion of the key communicators group that we're going to be beginning here in our district shortly. I've had some discussions with some community folks who are very interested in being involved in that, and I did link some articles in there that provide some extra information. As that gains some momentum, I will keep the board up to date on the progress of that and the purpose. And if anybody has any questions on that, feel free to ask, or only drop to me as you're Thanks, Governor.
All right. Thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is the Committee Reports, we'll start with the Finance Human Resources Committee, the draft minutes were provided to the board from the February eighth committee meeting. Brett Waller and other members of the committee are available for questions. Any board members have questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee this evening? Any questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee? Otherwise, we will move on to our CTP, or Curriculum, Technology, Pupil Service Committee. Draft minutes from the February eighth committee meeting were provided. Maria Volpe is chair, and other members of the CTP committee are available for questions. Do we have any questions for our CTP committee members this evening? Any questions for our CTP committee members? If not, we will move on on the agenda. We have a placeholder for unfinished business, we currently do not have anything. Next up will be Board of Education Business, just a reminder, I think we all know this as board members, but we are speaking to the topics and the motions that are provided, asking clarifying questions and making statements, these are not personal toward another board member or staff member by any means, we are working together and we continue to do that, and I'm proud of the work we've done together on that. I have had, when putting together this agenda with Superintendent Murray, I did have someone ask if we would move something, I'm not sure, this is how we settled on the agenda, but I would open to see if there's anyone who wants to motion anything to be provided in a different order this evening. Any board members want to hear anything in a different order?
I would like to motion that we move item F to after item H.
We have a motion by Chad to move F after H. Do we have a second to that motion?
Can I ask a clarifying question, or no?
Yeah, sure.
So Chad, are you wanting to move item, item H up to be discussing it now, or are you just wanting to completely move?
I would just move item F behind H.
Okay. Or B underneath, or these items underneath H?
Just F.
We have a motion by Chad, and to clarify that, we would go through items A through E, he's asking to move F to follow G and H, becoming in essence, H two. Do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second that motion.
We have a second by Linda, move agenda item F below H. Do we have any discussions or clarifying questions on this motion?
Just to clarify, the why I wanted to move it was, I think that should be, I hate to lock myself into two point seven increase, and then go on and talk about budget reductions. I mean, it's kind of in my mind a little backwards, but that's why I made the motion.
Okay. Any additional questions on the motion or this topic? Shannon, any clarifying points as to why we put that in this order, because I believe we did have that discussion, so if you want to add on to that?
Just that, it's kind of like chicken in a scenario, as long as we're sensitive to the fact that the budget proposal that I brought forth, NHR Finance, is based on that increase, that that's factored in already, and so any changes or any discussion that we would have, we'd have to have that in mind, not to say that could change. So that's why it was done in that order, Chad, just so you know.
Any additional questions or discussion on the motion to move item F below H?
I would ask for a roll call vote.
Okay. This time, we will not only call the vote, but have a roll call vote on that. Tammy, could you implement that for us, please?
Okay, so Brett Waller?
Nay.
Nay? Linda Yingling?
Aye.
Paul Groove?
Nay.
Chad Krueger?
Aye.
Ron Liberty?
Nay.
Jaclyn Gremler?
Aye.
Maria Volpe?
Aye.
Kevin Lake?
So we do not have a majority?
No, we have a four-four.
Since it's not a majority, then that motion fails. It's a four-four vote motion. Is that correct, Tammy, my interpretation? You need a simple majority, five, three of the eight members in attendance?
I believe that the president, your vote kind of, I don't know.
Otherwise, we were at four-three without mine.
I believe, I interpret the same way that you do.
We will continue, and we will go. Approval of the Head Start Community Assessment, we had an attached topic summary sheet from Ryan Martinovich, a recommended motion from the administration, do we have a motion this evening?
I move to approve the Head Start twenty-two, twenty-three Community Assessment.
Motion by Paul, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron, do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic this evening? Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is ER, SEA, Enrollment Point System, addition of Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, as an automatic qualifier for Head Start. An attached topic summary sheet was provided by Mr. Martinovich, and a recommended motion was provided, do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the new twenty-two, twenty-three MAPS Head Start Point Sheet to include the addition of SNAP as an automatic qualifier for MAPS Head Start.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Brett. Any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic this evening? Any questions or discussion on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment, topic summary sheet was provided by Mr. Martinovich, and a recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening?
I move to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four MAPS Head Start Self-Assessment.
You have a motion by Paul, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Ron, any discussion on this motion or topic? Any discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the Head Start Five-Year Strategic Goals. The topic summary sheet provided by Ryan Martinovich, and a recommended motion. Do we have a motion this evening? Jaclyn?
I recommend a motion to approve the 2023-2024 MAPS Head Start Five-Year Strategic Goals.
Motion by Jaclyn, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Chad. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or the topic? Any discussion on the motion or this topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is establishing an evidence-based COVID-19 Head Start mitigation policy. Attached topic summary sheet from Mr. Martinovich, a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the Head Start Evidence COVID-19 Mitigation Policy.
Motion by Ron, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any questions or discussion on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. F is the Staff Pay Schedule for 2023-2024. Attached topic summary sheet from Shannon Murray, a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening?
I move to recommend the approval of the advance of staff through their respective compensation plans and schedules for the 2023-2024 school year, and to increase compensation for non-classified staff by 2.7%.
You have a motion by Brett, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. At this time, I would ask board members for any discussion or questions on this topic or this motion. Brett?
I'd like to point out that before we dive too deep into this, the motion reads that we are advancing staff through their respective compensation plans and schedules. So, we're moving steps, and Shannon, you can clarify me if I'm misrepresenting this, but we're moving our staff through their respective lanes and steps on the salary plan that was created in 2018, and non-classified staff at a 2.7% increase to their wage. If you look at the resolution that Shannon sent out in our discussion sheet, the bottom of that resolution notes that upon budgetary allowance, upon budgetary allowance or constraints, apply percent increases or decreases respectively to the entire schedule, not fixed amounts, not modifying various steps or benchmarks. So, if you are looking to change percentages, I think that's an entirely different motion that needs to be made, and that's not what we're discussing right here. And that motion and the resolution was adopted and passed in 2018.
Any other questions or discussions? Thank you, Brett.
I would like, I mean, I 100% agree they all deserve their increase, but we also are facing a budget reduction that this district's never seen before, and I've said that many a time.
I'll say it again tonight.
And I, I just think that's something that should have, should have some more discussion. You know, I throw out some things like maybe do an administration freeze. Shannon responds, it was like 62,000. Like there saves one buster out. I mean, if you would knock it down to like a 1.5% across the board, you'd save some money that way, that we can save maybe a teacher or two. That was with my little question that I had, I sent to Shannon and the administration. Just think it's something that we should, when you guys passed that, you didn't see that coming down the road. You had a referendum that had money.
Linda, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question, and maybe this, I already know the answer, but I just got to double check. So, non-classified staff, is that like our student, our aides, our staff aides, our?
Yeah.
That, where they don't actually have like that full contract with us?
There are a single-digit quantity of people in our district that are not on a salary schedule.
Okay.
And so, we were just trying to be equitable to those folks.
Okay. Yep.
The 2.7 represents approximately an average step increase for everybody throughout the rest of the compensation plan.
Okay.
They're just not on a plan.
Okay, I was just asking, because I was trying to decide what the non-classified staff was versus our regular staff, if it meant two different, you know, duties. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, Linda. Brett, your hand was up.
I think a point needs to be noted, too, that when this was put forth, the issue that we had was a severe discrepancy between one end of the spectrum and the other in our district of teacher salaries and benefits. And as a result of a referendum, that was fixed, and the adoption of the resolution and this plan that was put forward then was to eliminate the problem from happening again in the future. Sticking with what Shannon and the administration has put forward would allow us to continue that plan and not put us back into a dip that five years down the road, if we get money back again, we're not having to dump an excess of money to fix everybody's salary, just to shortstop us for this next two years.
Thank you, Brett. Paul?
Just, I don't believe the speaker's hearing, working the side of the table. I can hardly hear when people are talking at the table, using their microphones. I realize that, but this speaker is not projecting to us, if that's what it's supposed to be doing.
That is supposed to protect, project to the audience as well as your, the entire board?
Very well.
Okay. I will just remind all board members to speak into our microphones the best we can. Yes, a clarifying point in the past, and I'm asking Shannon and Dr. Strike to speak to something they weren't here for in those capacities, or your current capacities, but historically, we did a leaner step change as well as tried to keep up the best we could with CPI to be competitive. And when we've done community conversations in the past, one of the things we talked about was to do our best to compete, to retain and attract quality staff. Am I summarizing that?
Yes, that's been the spirit of those conversations in the past, yes.
And to Mr. Waller's point, there was a resolution made that we were back at that time, putting this together, and a lot of work was put together to go back to a series of schedules to try to help us going forward. And I guess what we're looking for is any other questions or motions? I was just trying to clarify that point or those points.
Did, didn't we make a big adjustment last year? I thought.
Dr. Strike is?
I don't think, yeah, I mean, here, so tired, but I thought.
I believe, was it last year or the year before? I believe support staff, they made some adjustments to some.
Sure, they redid the support staff plan.
And to President Lake's point, I believe in the past, the idea was that you have always, since you've done this, moved people through their schedules and lanes. Some years, you have also put additional dollars, for example, 1% increase into every single step lane, and they moved. I think right now that what we're comfortable with is making sure everyone does that step lane.
And really, the spirit of this is that we're trying to be as competitive as we can be with CPI and what our neighbors are doing while still honoring the fact that we're looking at $5 million deficit potential.
Correct.
And so, that we feel that this is kind of in the wheelhouse of that being responsible in that way while still affording staff the opportunity to move through those raises at a very, I would say, modest pace.
The July 1 estimate is 8% for CPI.
Andrew?
I think you said board member, deploy your microphone real quick, and also try to ensure your head's being up. If you're not, we'll measure points and directions.
Thank you for the reminder. Since we've heard a couple of questions or gone through some information on this topic, I would ask other board members if they have any additional questions or discussion on this topic or this motion at this time.
No, but should we do a roll call vote?
Yes, we will.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to ask a question or discuss this topic or Otherwise, we were asked, and we'll do a roll call vote on this motion. Tammy, if you could implement that for us.
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Linda Yingling?
Aye.
Paul Proo?
Aye.
Chad Krieger?
Nay.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Jaclyn Gremler?
Aye.
Maria Volpe?
Aye.
Kevin Lake?
Motion carries as recorded in the roll call vote. Next item on our agenda is the Administrator Contract Template for Fiscal Year, Fiscal Years 23 through 25. The attached topic summary sheet was provided by Dr. Kelly Strike with the recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Brett?
I recommend a motion to approve the revised Administrator Contract Template as presented for the 2023 through 2025 contract cycle.
A motion by Brett?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or clarifying questions on this topic or the motion?
Are we able to do it, seeing that the non-renewal already passed? Does the revision's got to be done before the non-renewal?
No, we are able to do it.
Shannon, would you just highlight for the audience the couple of points? A lot of, a lot of this, what we talked about at committee, just for the good of everybody that's in attendance, was to work together for common language as we've worked with different groups of its staff or support staff. So, if you could kind of highlight that real quick.
Sure, this is the first step in just aligning all of our handbooks, contract languages, to just make sure that our vacation days are aligned and our sick policies are aligned and all these, just to get the languages tight so that when my uncle passes away, as a real, not my uncle, but as an uncle passes away, some people have that covered in their, their PTO policies and funeral leave, others don't. And so, the goal is to get it all combined, really to do a couple of things. One is make it clean and understandable, but also to eliminate or reduce any payroll errors and all those kind of things. So, it's just, everything on here is just language and getting everybody consistent, all groups consistent.
I guess to clarify from my perspective in reviewing this at a committee level, and I believe the committee would agree, it is just language. This is not additional raises, this isn't different things that affects the balance sheet as presented. This is clerical teamwork here to put things together as consistently as possible.
We did stagger the liquidated damages by date, you know, the closer you get to the start of the school year, in this revision, the higher the liquidated damages go, because there's, there's extra costs to absorb that staff reduction at that time or if someone leaves. So, that's probably the biggest change.
And that is something we had learned along the way. We are required by statute that we do have to show that there is additional cost when asking for liquidated damages. You can't just assign damages for inconvenience. It is for replacing that person, so that was where this idea came from. Additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is budget reductions for 2023-2024. At our February 8 Finance Human Resources Committee meeting, administration presented potential budget reductions, and they were put into three categories. It was ESSR-related reductions, declining enrollment and rightsizing, as well as reductions due to budget constraints and revenue limits. Would you like to go through your summary first, or would you like me to ask for a motion first?
If it's okay, for the benefit of the group, I'll just introduce the subject here a little bit, kind of set the stage, and I appreciate everyone coming today. This is, of course, a topic of great interest to everyone. I also appreciate Marcy's comments earlier. By way of background, I'm going to sound like a broken record, because I've said this 100 times, it feels like in the staff bulletin and many committee meetings, but the reason we are here, as Dr. Strike pointed out, is that we have kind of a number of things coming together that are kind of unique in our district that have put us in a bit of a jam. And I've used the term perfect storm, which is way overusing it, but it's true. And so, we have issues of declining enrollment, combined with ESSR funds that are coming to an end on us. We have increasing costs, we have failed referendums, we have the state funding inadequacies that Dr. Strike very appropriately showed on that chart. And all those things are coming together at Merrill at this time to give us, as Chad Krieger correctly pointed out, a deficit like we've never seen could be, you know, original forecast of up to almost $5 million. And so, you know, Kelly's groups, the finance directors, the superintendents, people around the state have been always talking about this, this fiscal cliff, mostly in the terms of ESSR funds coming to an end, and when that comes to an end, you got this cliff. Well, we have that cliff plus some, and our cliff is bigger and deeper and certainly than what we've seen in the past, and much bigger and deeper than many of our neighbors. The, and so, if you think of it as an actual cliff, in a typical year, we've dealt with that cliff certainly for many, many years, anybody that's on this board in the terms of declining enrollment. And that's a cliff that's kind of easy to manage, because there's logic to that, and there's reasonable changes, and you downsize, and you get efficient, and that's usually a pretty small gap, 800,000 if that's small, 900,000, a million. Those are things that you can do. But this gap, of course, is way, way different, way, way bigger than what we've seen in the past. And we are now literally standing on the edge of that gap with our toes hanging over, for lack of a better term. In a normal year, to address those things, we would, we would rightsize and downsize, but we're at a place now, as everyone in this room is well aware, that some pretty drastic things have to go. And so, the process in our district and in many districts is that the school board charges the superintendent and his team to come up with a recommendation, a solution, to get us over this gap and to deal with this, and that's exactly what we've done. We presented it to HR Finance last week. I appreciate all the questions that I got over the, over the course of the week from board members and others, for that matter. And this, the recommendation that you have in front of you that everybody has seen is essentially, how do we get over that gap? How do we get to the other side? And in this case, maybe a canyon is a better term, which, which still, you know, if it was a declining enrollment year and we're getting leaner, if this was to stay with that gap metaphor, this cliff metaphor, we strip some gear off and get lighter and leaner, we jump, and we can make that. Now, the plan is a little bit different. The plan that I gave you shows you opportunities to still shed those things that we need to. That's the ESSR cuts and the rightsizing cuts. But we've also added this, this notion of a bridge to help us get to the other side, that bridge being, of course, ESSR funds, budget deficit spending, fund balance approach, those kind of things, all designed as temporary solutions, but solutions and a bridge to still help us get to the other side, that we're, for the first time, we're talking about things like deficit spending and fund balancing. And I think I should probably digress here for a second on fund balance, because in my staff bulletin, I use, and in loose terms, we use the term like savings account, because that's something we all understand. But it's very different than that in school. As our board knows, it's, it's a, it's not even all cash, it's assets. We get our revenues in giant checks from the state or from the townships or open enrollment three, four times a year, right, fourth maybe? And as Dr. Strike pointed out on her activity, our open enrollment, which is largely bridges, big check, five million bucks, we get it in June at the end of the year. So we've paid for bridges all year to get that payment. So we have cash flow problems, we every Wisconsin. And so a fund balance is set aside to kind of ride out those peaks and valleys. If you don't have a good enough fund balance, then you have to short-term borrow, which costs money. And that's the kind of discussions that we've been having as we've kind of gone through this with our board. So it's a savings account in the loosest of terms, but it's something that cannot be just tinkered with, and it's certainly not a long-term solution to address our problems. And so the plan, again, it looks at shedding some of that gear, making us lighter and leaner, gives us a little bit of a bridge to get to the other year, and it is a one-year plan. It is designed to get us to the other side. On the other side, we hope that things like Jefferson get resolved and serving the community, and we know that's a big deal on the referendum. We hope that another shot at a referendum in the future goes a little bit smoother because of that. But those are not options that are available to us at this time. So we presented a plan, we think it's thoughtful, we think it's thorough, we had input from every building administrator about how does this impact your building, they all had a say, the departments as well. And it buys us time. And one of the challenges that we have on this, well, a couple of things, is that we're trying to find that sweet spot between not running a budget deficit that's gonna creep up on us and surprise us and cost me my job one day because we've overspent, or secondly, we don't want to overcut. And so those are, we gotta try to find that spot in there. And we think we have the bones of a plan here that can do that. But I want to stress a couple of things. One is that on this list that you see in front of you are a lot of different things, and again, it touches all parts of the district. I want to stress that we, what you don't see on that list was also given very strong consideration. We talked to every, like I said, every principal, every director, all those kind of things, and everything, if it's in our district, it was thought of, it was discussed, it was considered, and so all those things, and many of them came forward in board questions, and I appreciate that. But if it's not on this list, we have certainly given it some thought and factor in it. As you go through this chart, I just want to point out three changes, and they're mostly editorial changes. They don't impact the overall feel of it. So the first change is I added a column on the left that essentially numbers them. So I think that will help with the discussion moving forward and maybe make things a little bit cleaner there. At the bottom, I've added two editorial terms. In the original document, it says assumed 1 million in budget deficit. I want that to read assumes up to because of the projections. It's not an automatic effect, as I'll introduce potentially in this discussion in maybe year zero. And then also, I added the word assumes. The original sentence read no new money added to any compensation plans but scheduled step and lane advances. That was an assume, but that now has been formalized. And then at the total of all the R column things, the white, that number should read 1, 6, 9, 0, 0, 0. The overall dollar amount has not changed. So those are the three things. So we're doing this today, it's middle of February, and we're doing this today because this is all driven by teacher layoff bonus timeframe, which is the end of March. It would be great to have the luxury to do this in August, which is realistic, but where we would have some of the assumptions addressed and ironed out because even in the course of one week, the information that we are going on has changed a bit, and I want to get to that in a little bit. So as this evolves and as those assumptions understand, our goal is that end of March. So when we talked about the unknowns and the assumptions, Kelly introduced some things from the governor's budget and mentioned that we did this as a pretty conservative recommendation, and that is absolutely right. And so typically, the way it goes is DPI makes a recommendation, this is the money we want in our budget. Many, many banal budgets, the governor backs that off a little bit because that's, and then, of course, in a Democratic governor situation, a Republican legislator will back that off much further. And so when we did our first projections, we were staying kind of a little bit conservative with that DPI number. When the governor came out with his information, particularly when it comes to aid, which is what, where the big bang in that proposal is for us, that revenue limit doesn't do a whole lot for us, as Kelly pointed out, that aid is what's really gonna score for us. And so we have gone from here on our projections to kind of here, not a big step, I moved my hand about maybe six inches, but that's a big deal in our proposal. And so as we go through this, there are some things that I, some recommendations within the recommendation that I might have, some updates and some opinions, those kind of things. We've also had a fair number of retirements that have come in that aligned very nicely with this plan that change a few things to some extent, and so as we get to those things, I can kind of hand those out, but I'll just pause there.
All right, thank you, Shannon. As we stated at the beginning of the topic, I believe all board members have the proposed MAPS budget reduction recommendations for 2023, 2024, and we would, as I introduced the topic, it was in three different sections. The way I picture this in talking to Shannon, perhaps this should go in bite-sized pieces and start with the ESSR-related reductions. There was a recommended or potential motion along that line to get some discussion started. Is anyone willing to make a motion? Brett?
I move to approve the ESSR-related reductions for the 2023, 2024 budget year as identified on the 23, 24 budget reduction table, specifically items E1 through E3.
We have a motion by Brett. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. So at this time, we have a motion and a second. I would turn this topic over for questions or discussion.
Just one clarified question on the topic summary sheet that it talks about this, this is all about, this is supposed to be informational?
It was at HR Finance. At the HR Finance meeting.
No, it's listed for us too here. We're at a board meeting February 15. Informationals, Mark.
Yeah, it says informational with some...
Yeah, at the bottom of that topic summary sheet, it says no motion at HR Finance, motion to regular board meeting to move forward with reductions.
It says no motion at HR Finance, motion to regular board meeting to move forward with reductions. Well, this is the first, I think, quite a few of us are seeing these recommended motions for this. As far as my understanding, we weren't coming here to, I mean, with potential motions, but to have these thrown at us right now to make that decision if you want us to approve that is ridiculous. Thank you.
Call the question. We have a board member calling a question on the motion. Do we have to then vote on calling the question, or do we call that down?
You're calling it to vote, right?
Right.
Okay.
Roll call vote, please.
Not hearing any other questions, but taking everything into consideration. Tammy, could you do a roll call vote at this time for the motion on the ESSR-related reductions as motion by Brett, second and by Paul?
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Linda Yingling.
Ne.
Paul Pro.
Aye.
Chad Krieger.
Ne.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Jacqueline Grammer.
Aye.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye.
Motion carries per roll call vote. I would ask, at this time, we were going through to the next session, the declining enrollment and right sizing. In our handout, it's a beige or tan section labeled D1 through D7. Is anyone willing to make a motion on that? Brett?
I move to approve the declining enrollment and right sizing reductions for the 2023, 2024 budget year as identified on the 23, 24 budget reduction table, specifically items D1 through D7.
We have a motion by Brett. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. This time, I will turn it over for discussion or questions related to that tan section, D1 through D7 in this motion. Does anyone have questions or discussion?
I do on the transportation.
Go ahead, Chad.
With D7, with that cut, we're looking at putting some kids on a bus for two hours, is that correct?
Well, to be determined. So there could be, that could be a lot of things. It could be, certainly could be longer bus rides, but we currently bus kids that are closer to school than the state's requirement, and so there's a lot of things to look at. But yes, it could be longer bus rides. I don't know about the two hours, I think there was some, did I offer a clarification from Dale on that the other day, Chad?
Yeah.
I don't have a recall.
Kind of the same thing. I mean, we're doing it twice, so we're gonna do it twice, so I'm guessing it's gonna be, because I already see a bus already at 6:15 in the morning, so.
Yeah. So kind of to be determined where that actual reduction will come from as far as transfers, who gets the ride in town, or those kind of things.
The clarifying point, when you talk about per statute, many districts, the requirement is if you're two miles away, based on some data provided in the last couple of years, we talked about, we could do that if you're within that mile to two miles. We'll add that because the theory was the buses and their corresponding drivers were going right by there. So the cost of the route does not necessarily go up, however, the amount of time on the bus every time you stop increases naturally. So I don't know and have not seen that through the route progressions. I believe through some clarification, we are in, going into year three of a three-year contract?
We will start in year three of the school year.
Correct, so we're in year two. What we're planning for year three are only, someone else had clarified from the community, we do have one transportation provider at this time, and that is Wendell Bussing. I'm just trying to think of things that people have asked on the topic.
Yeah, the common question from the board was, can we change the contract? And the answer is yes, between, like over the, between school years, you can make modifications to routes, pickups, those kind of things. So we can do this.
Looking for additional questions or discussion on this particular motion or topic for the declining enrollment and right sizing section, D1 through D7? Chad, go ahead.
On D6, does that affect dual credit or the college?
No, so what that'll do is that we'll have, so we have PLCs at the high school in English and math, and so what that will do is we'll have, staff will not have a chance to collaborate in algebra and geometry, we'll have to pick up extra classes. That's why, I don't know if you saw my narrative that that class sizes don't really increase because we're adding sections for people, so to speak. So we've talked about a rotation in some of the APs, like the AP Kelp or AP Stats when that runs, but that's kind of to be determined, the expectation in math that those would remain.
Chad, you saw at the floor, anything else to clarify on that?
Thanks.
Thank you, Chad. Additional questions or discussion on this particular motion? Any questions or discussion on this motion? I think to follow suit, we'll call the vote and we'll have that as a roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Brett Waller.
Aye.
Linda Yingling.
Aye.
Paul Pro.
Aye.
Chad Krieger.
Ne.
Ron Liberty.
Aye.
Jacqueline Grammer.
Aye.
Maria Volpe.
Aye.
Kevin Blake.
Aye.
Motion carries as depicted in the roll call vote. Next on our handout of reductions is the reductions due to budget constraints and revenue limits on our handout that goes as updated in the column labels R1 through R17. And I'm not sure if we want to tackle that all at once, or based on the news this evening, do you feel that we should be drawing a line somewhere based on what Dr. Strike and you talked about this evening? Or do you feel we should look at the entire sheet and ask for a motion on the entire?
Yeah, a couple of things come into play here now. The information that Dr. Strike shared, particularly on the aid side, the way retirements are coming in, et cetera, et cetera, and the factor of time. So we're starting to get a little bit of time on our side because those things have afforded us a little bit of time. My recommendation, if I were to submit this brand-new blank slate today, would be to tonight, address R1 through R11 and pause.
Someone willing to make a motion similar to that to work R1 through R11 and table R12 through R17? Brett?
Recommend a motion to approve the reduction due to budget restraints and revenue limits for the 2023, 2024 budget year as identified on the 23, 24 budget reduction table, specifically items R1 through R11.
We have a motion by Brett. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. This time, I'll open the floor to discussion or questions, starting on R1 through R11?
Correct.
Brett?
Shannon, could you maybe just speak to a couple of these? If you have, I know, I think at Finance HR, I may be asked for, if you just give us a short little narrative on some of these that might already be done, that these aren't necessarily cuts that we're making. They are cuts, but they're not directly impacted at the moment because they might be not filled or currently retired. If there's anything you want to...
Yeah, so the Administrator R1 has been a resignation that was approved last week, so that was essentially done. The middle school tech ed, there's a combination, you've got the business ed tech ed, and that position will be a layoff, but that, that's kind of a curricular programming change. The middle school support staff at the library, that is a retirement. The athletics and building budgets, there's nothing easy about that. That's gonna be coaching challenges, that's gonna be booster clubs, that's gonna be burden on the buildings, but those don't necessarily involve layoffs per se, but the two custodians are retirements that would not be filled. The instructional coaches, unfortunately, would be a reduction at the middle school. The PLT space is believed to be, I think will be absorbed elsewhere at the high school. The two high school support staff that are study hall supervisors are anticipated to be retirement and/or reservations. Let's see, the PE, so the, we have a PE retirement, and do we have a second opening currently? So that one will be absorbed. The challenge with Head Start PE is that, and I apologize for using this term because this is not what I'm trying to say, we have a very high, and we're fortunate to have an excellent Head Start program in our district, and you can walk in the place and what those guys are doing, you just feel that this is an excellent program. FIAD is not a requirement of Head Start, and so we happen to have that as part of an excellent program. So that reduction that FIAD would eliminate, FIAD from Head Start and the 4K sites and that position, that person would be absorbed elsewhere in the district. So I had an open.
Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Dr. Strike, you presented...
Because you asked me that, so if you did everything on the list tonight, currently as it stands right now, based on retirements, resignations, would be seven support staff and 10 teaching positions. What through R1 would be six support staff, five teaching positions. However, know that we are anticipating additional retirements, we're having conversations that we don't have yet, so I think it would be number, but that's where it stands today, based on retirements, resignations, if that helps.
I just, and that, that's total numbers, that's not, that's not taking into account what we have for retirements and anything like that.
It's today, all the retirements and resignations, you're gonna approve them by the...
Yep, that number of, that number of six is not including, that's our grand total, that's leading.
As of today, but we anticipate more retirements, so it would go down. Is that, you know, we're anticipating some more. makes sense? You know, we're anticipating some more. Shannon referenced that, that we anticipate more, but that's where it stands today.
And so let me put an asterisk on my recommendation. Can I do that, an asterisk? So these, that's not to say that these things are not able to be revisited or may be revisited in March, or at our next board meeting or a special board meeting. We think that this is pretty tight. Also, I want to stress that we will be having this discussion again next year with these things. And so I just want to make people aware that this is a recommendation based on current trending positive information and.
I think the other thing, if I could interject to that, we, we have a budget surplus, which is part of that. If we did not have a budget surplus, I think I and, we have had this conversation several, every day, Shannon, I have this conversation about ideas. But we have a budget surplus, but I will quote our legislator who on Friday said, but everyone wants a piece of the budget surplus pie. And when he met with a group of school business managers on Friday, he had twenty-two meetings that week in regard to people who are looking for funding. But still a positive thing to say that there's a budget surplus. We have a proposal from a governor now that we think could make some real difference. The other thing I just want to add to is that right now, as you know, every month and I reference, I didn't, being that I didn't build this budget, and it's my first year in this district, I, I don't, I would tell you in my previous district, when I firsthand wrote that budget the first year, I was much more confident my third year than my first year. That being said, we have a forecasting tool that I can use, and as I mentioned, some areas we're forecasting right now ninety-five to ninety-eight percent. That means right now, we're forecasting under budget this year, which is a good thing. So that plays, I mentioned this to Shannon today, that plays a role into this, that things are looking good and we're kind of past hopefully the worst of winter and heat and some of those bills, right, exactly. So at the end of the year, we want to spend our budget out for aid reasons. But my hope is that we may be able to be creative here at the end of the year. For example, our technology purchase that you might talk about next, that we're planning on doing ESSR, maybe we don't have to do as much of ESSR and we'll have some extra ESSR dollars to kind of offset as well. So I think, again, being February, not wanting to overcut, I mean, I think if we can get to this place, we've made some difference. And I would also say that, you know, any resignation, retirement, things that change will certainly be looked at and how come, is it needed? Can we merge positions? You know, can we change things like that? That's an ongoing thing and we might have to be back here right next month talking about more. But I think this gives us a start.
Dr. Strike brings up a fair point, and we'll continue to encourage that frugal spending this year.
Yeah.
As a way to benefit us for next year.
Correct.
That'll be key, and so we'll start messaging that out.
Yep.
That'll be important.
Thank you, Dr. Strike. Look to board members for additional clarifying questions or discussion on the topic of this, of this motion. Maria, go ahead.
Just want to clarify that I understand, so if we're talking about R one through R eleven tonight, which is kind of where we're going now, right? Okay, so we said R one, the administrator, that was a resignation. R two, that would be a layoff?
That's correct.
R three is a retirement.
Yep.
R four, booster clubs, athletics.
To be fair, R four could be result in some larceny, coaches losing their position.
Okay. And then R five, both custodians are retirements?
Yeah, that's true, anticipated retirements.
What does that mean?
We don't have, we don't have the form submitted.
But there's a conversation that, that, okay. And then R six is the building budget cuts. And then R seven is three layoffs for instructional coaches at the middle school, correct?
Yep. Now, I know, so, so that's where the, like the retirements factor in, in.
That's kind of where I'm going with this, is do we want to do these layoff pieces tonight when we actually have time and it would be more clear in another month?
So to be, so that's a good question, Maria. I appreciate your, no, nobody's getting laid off as a result of this process. That will happen in March at the end. So now we go back and we say, okay, we don't have these three positions, and I'll use the instructional coach as an example. And the instructional coaches go back into the larger pool, all instructional coaches, and we determine from that point what staff are impacted.
Right, but there, but there's three positions cut.
Three positions, but not three people.
Okay. And then, just to clarify, I just want to go down this list real quick.
Sure.
So the high school support staff, I think you had said one was absorbed?
Well, so both, both of them will be entered back into the support staff pool.
Okay.
I think there's a plan at the high school, I think, although I don't know for sure. PLT space supervisor to be, and then R nine, those two support staffs are anticipated resignations and, and/or retirements.
Okay. So R nine, same thing, that would be an anticipated retirement?
Yes, or resignation.
Help me understand that, because one means a lot different than the other to me.
Two people, two people hold that spot.
But R nine is one position?
It's one position, the two people part-time.
Oh, part-time, got it, got it. Okay, and then R ten is absorbed?
Yes.
Okay, as is R eleven.
Well, R eleven, clarify that one for me, Kelly, or Ryan.
The other thing too, I would also say, remember, like, there, you went through one through eleven on the ESSR and budget reduction impacts too.
Yeah.
I just don't want, do you know what I mean, like, you got to start from the top and work out, you're going through part of it, but there are impacts on those other things as well. There would be layoffs and, you know, those aren't.
On the other, yeah. No, I understand that. But these, these we were talking and did in the past about, I don't want to use the term we're using, but what I, what I'm looking at right now is can we wait till March to look at these positions between R one and R eleven that may result in somebody losing their job? Because we have an extra month that we can solidify who's retiring, what it's going to look like. Can we afford to wait another month to do these couple of ones and make recommendations?
My suggestion would be no. And the reason I say that is because we're talking about positions, not people. And so any person that's attached to these positions will get put back into the pool of, say, whatever they're certified for, qualified for, and those kind of things. And so between this discussion and the end of March, we then have to go through and determine which of those people in that whole pool will be impacted. And so, you know, we had discussions early on where it's like, if someone, if there's a position on this list that is clearly a person, we would have that discussion with them. And we did. We didn't have that discussion with a group of all second grade teachers, all elementary teachers, because there's no one that's identified as being that person yet.
Right.
So that work's got to be done. And that's, that can be, that's going to be a second heavy lift. And we need time to do that. Because what you have to do is you have to figure out certifications and schedules and, and all those kind of things. And then determine who's best qualified and, you know, all those things that factor into who is kept. So I think to answer your question a different way is that waiting till the end of March does not save the middle school support staff library position in this recommendation, if that makes sense.
It does, yes, if it's approved, yeah, got it. And then do you want me to speak to eleven on Head Start?
Yeah.
Okay. So, because it's a combination of that PE and that, so when we referenced not offering PE would be to all 4K community sites as well as Head Start, so that is part of it. And then within Head Start, the conversation was to, we could potentially reduce a half-day position, or a half, a half aid and teacher position, if that makes sense, and absorb those kids through increased class size in the other sections, as well as potentially going from two family service workers down to one. That was conversations that Ryan have had with our technical training assistance with Head Start with various models, in the idea that with Monday not having kids, maybe teachers and other support staff could pick up some of that parent engagement piece that they do. Again, we do know of some retirements and resignations within Head Start that we can, it might look a little different in terms of how they operate right now, in terms of how that's done, but that's ultimately what the total Head Start implications would be.
Maria, you still have the floor if you have any other clarifying questions on that?
Not right now, thank you.
Thank you, Maria. Chad, I'll turn it over to you.
I guess, I do have some, like athletics, I went through and did the math. There's just coaches in athletics, there's $291,000 budget. I might be off there, here, there. Some of it was $2,000. I mean, I look at $30,000, and then I look at what you proposed for the LTS and the technology, I'm like, how come we're not taking $100,000 from there? And I guess my problem is why I say need for the first two, is how come we're not having a discussion before we got to make motions? I would, I would have thought it would have been nice that the board could have a discussion about this without the motion. And then look at, okay, yeah, you know, maybe we can take $70,000 here, maybe we can cut another custodian here, instead of all of us just have to, we can't talk about anything until we make a motion on it. And so now, if Brett, if we want to do something, Brett has to, I have to persuade Brett to redo his motion, amend his motion, why can't we just have a, I don't understand why we're not having a discussion as a board about the budget before making a motion?
And I guess I'll speak to that. Chad, I, my interpretation of what the board has followed with Robert's Rules of Order was to have a motion to have a discussion. So we're guided more than just the agenda topic. I tried to narrow it down with the information that we had to a R one through R eleven scope based on new information that was since even the committee meeting. But to your point, we do a lot at this board level with friendly amendments, but you can certainly at any, any point make an amendment, we would vote on that as an example. If you asked for the amendment to read instead of R one through R eleven, that you wanted R one through something else, or to remove R something, you, you could do that, have a second, we would vote on that as parliamentary procedure. A lot of other times, I would call our friendly amendment more so clarification than persuasion, if you would. But I understand what you're saying. I just wanted to clarify the process and what I was thinking throughout this tonight.
I just, I guess my, my disappointment is that we're not discussing it as a board before making amendments. We voted on two items, cutting, what, million and a half, not quite, and we really didn't have a discussion on it, except for if anybody had something to give to Shannon, where to me, we could have had a separate board meeting just on the budget and had a discussion. I, I don't know. I just don't feel right on making a motion when, I mean, I was at the, I was at the finance, I filled in, I was at the finance, I was under assumption would not move forward, we were going to the board as a discussion, not as motion and voting on it.
All right, and I read the topic summary sheet differently, so I apologize. I will work with Shannon and Kelly to make sure we have that spelled out. I thought in the topic summary sheet, it did read that it was being asked to be brought forward to possibly approve at the board level that topic summary, in whatever the board felt worthy of motioning.
And I guess I took it the same way he did, and it says potential recommendation for motions. I mean, this is a big deal and this is a lot of stuff to go through. And coming here and then we read the motions, one approves, one second it, and then you ask for discussion. Doesn't really give you a lot of time to swallow the pill and decide, you know, is this really the best way we need to go at it? I don't know. I mean, I know Maria asked a few questions at the Finance HR meeting the other night about giving a little bit more of a breakdown of each, you know, where each leg comes from, wherever department, how this funnels in through certain areas like the sports and athletics, you know, where does this pour into? But I don't know if you ever got any of those answers.
Every, every question that was submitted to me was answered in a shared document.
Well, that was submitted through email, but I'm talking about the HR Finance meeting that Maria was talking about. Chad asked questions, and then we also got all the questions that were submitted through email. But my understanding at the HR Finance is that it was coming here for discussion, and then I see on there that's potential recommendation for motion. That to me means potential, that means, you know, after a discussion of what we have to discuss tonight, then we could possibly make a motion to vote. But I guess at this point, it's kind of here and this is what's happening. That's all I got, thank you.
All right. I guess I don't want to restate what my thoughts were on.
You don't have to restate it, it's just, it's just kind of clearly what has been put on, on the, out here.
Fair enough. Thank you for sharing that, Linda. Additional discussion or questions on this motion or this topic? Any additional discussion? Brett?
I think the summation of all this is, this is how we operate, is we have motions and seconds, and everyone has the opportunity to vote either yes, no. And I felt comfortable with what administration has put in hundreds, if not maybe thousands of combined hours on, over my diving through a budget that's $42 million that I don't know the ins and outs of. I am going to take the recommendation of Shannon and Dr. Strike over me looking at line item by line item and assumptions. And I felt comfortable making a motion, and no one has to support that if they choose not to. I think the issue is, it's February fifteenth, and by the end of March, we need to have this resolved. And if it kicks down the road, it's just less and less time for everyone else to get something done thoroughly and thought out. And it's kind of now or never, unfortunately. This is just the absolute crap situation that we have, for a lack of a better term.
All right, thank you Brett. Paul, did I see your hand as well?
I realize that this is, is something that everybody likes to face. But I think we need to understand that this is Shannon Murray's budget. He's the one that designed this budget, he crafted the budget. He's putting the numbers in where he knows he can work. He's doing this to the best of his ability, for the best interest of the math school district. We're not here to question what he's doing. We either agree or we disagree. But we're not here to question and try to make changes to his budget. This is not the school board's budget, this is the superintendent's budget. I think we need to move on and put our trust in him. And as he said, if it goes south, well, maybe he's looking for a different job. I don't anticipate that happening, he's doing a fine job. So with that in mind, I would call the question.
Kevin, I'm sorry. I guess I'm not trying to say that Shannon's not doing a good job, you know, at all, that had never came out of anybody's mouth on this stand here tonight.
That, that's, that's fair.
I mean, it is a big job, and yes, I understand it is his budget that he's had him to look at. However, us nine or eight board members up here tonight also have to look at how the community is going to perceive some of these things that we're doing, and look at, you know, the whole picture. And so that's why, you know, we're asking these questions. Because when we go home at night, or when I go home at night, I have to make sure that I made the best decision that I could for my community, the kids, and our staff. And so I don't want, Shannon, I didn't want to come across that way at all.
I didn't take it that way.
So I apologize for that. But I just want to let you know, since I've been on here, this is probably one of the biggest, biggest things that we've had to go through. I mean, closing schools and stuff, yeah, that was big, but this kind of money, it's a difficult situation. So, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Linda, I appreciate the clarification, and I think everybody has been very respectful and not speaking specifically to Mr. Murray or to Dr. Strike or, or the, anything more than paraphrasing that this is the process and, and what the hand we're already dealt stinks, and we're hoping that some other things, we will be continuing to get some good factors or good news moving forward. With that being said, the question has been called, and I would ask that it is done so in a, the same roll call vote manner, please, Tammy?
Brett Waller?
Aye.
Linda Yingling?
Nay.
Paul Prou?
Aye.
Chad Krieger?
Nay.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Jacqueline Gremler?
Aye.
Maria Volpe?
Aye.
Kevin Blade?
Aye.
Motion carries as dictated here by the roll call vote. At this time, there are other items on this list, would you like those tabled and not acted on, or would you like some discussion on that this evening? Brett?
Make a motion to table items R12 through R17 to be brought up at a future meeting as administration deems necessary.
Motion, Brett, the second by Paul. Any discussion on that motion of tabling items R12 through R17, as noted? Hearing none, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Give any abstentions. Motion carries on a voice vote. Next item on our agenda is the personnel report, we have hirings, recruitments, resignations, retirements, and an updated personnel report provided by Dr. Kelly Strick. There is a recommended motion, do we have a motion this evening?
I move to approve the ADAC's personnel report, contingent upon satisfaction of the appropriate liquidated damages for resignations that have happened.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Ron. Do we have any discussions or clarifying questions on the motion or this topic?
I got one.
Chad, go ahead.
The HR coordinator that's posted was one, like 116, and one of our questions here, it was said that, is that still planned on being filled, or you're, because on the question that, I don't know, like.
Yeah, so.
It said that it was not going to be filled.
And I can address it. No, this, we had a discussion with our secretaries at central office about combining positions through attrition as they go forward. This is more of a coordinator role, this is a pretty task-heavy position, that's very different than the positions you're referring to, Chad.
I got just a thing I want.
Are you, are you looking for my response to the question?
I was just reading the question, I was just reading your response to the question, I just saw it today too, so.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't realize you responded.
Oh, okay.
The Google Docs getting.
Okay. And I'm just verifying my response, I think it's accurate, it's accurate what I just said, that the secretary positions are different than that coordinator position. And, and we have had that discussion at central office, so.
And that's a position, like you said, you can't get by without?
Yes. Given our structure and the combination of that role, that, that's essential.
Any follow-ups, Chad?
No.
Any additional questions or discussion on the motion or the topic, the board members? Any additional questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries on a voice vote. Next on our agenda is the consent agenda, before I ask for that motion, does anyone want anything individually pulled from our consent agenda? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion. Ron?
Move to approve the consent agenda items A through C, which include minutes of the January 25th, 2023, and January 30th, 2023 meetings, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $3,533,298.12, and donations totaling $1,648.97.
We have a motion by Ron, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Maria, all those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? None noted. All right, motion carries. Next item on our agenda is items for future meetings, we are keeping track of a, a running list, and it's fortunately fairly short, but I would turn it over to any board members that would like anything clarified that will be coming up at next committee or this board Anything to be clarified or added for future meetings, otherwise for the regular board meetings, contact Shannon or myself, or the committee chairs to have things added. Just a reminder, the next is the radio schedule, tomorrow Superintendent Murray and I will be on Community Scan, approximately 8:15 a.m., Blue J 730 radio station. Just a reminder of some upcoming future meetings, Safety Committee meeting meets next on Monday, February 27th, at 12:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Facility Committee meets on Wednesday, March 1st, 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom. CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee next meets on March 8th, 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom, with the Human Resource Finance Committee directly following, no sooner than 5:00 p.m. in the boardroom. Our Head Start Policy Council meets on Tuesday, March 14th, 5:30 p.m. out at Pine River School for Young Learners. Our next regular scheduled board meeting was for Wednesday, March 15th, at 5:30 p.m., currently slated to be in the central office boardroom. Did have a placeholder for closed session, at this time we do not have a need for that. So at this time, I would ask board members, anyone willing to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Brett, second by Chad. All those in favor of the motion to adjourn at 7:26 p.m. signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say nay. Motion carries, meeting's adjourned, thank you all for your attendance.